Good evening and welcome to the regular June ninth Town Council meeting. If you would mind, join it, arise and join us in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, under announcements, the only thing I have are upcoming Town Council meetings. Thursday, June twenty-third at seven PM, Thursday, July fourteenth at seven PM, and Thursday, August eighteenth, also at seven PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tax bills have been issued and are due July first. Property owners who have not received their tax bills should contact the Tax Collector's Office to obtain a copy of the bill. Please join us on Saturday, June eighteenth, for the first free movie night of, in the park of two thousand twenty-two. Parks and Recreation will be showing a movie in Canto. The movie begins at eight-thirty on the T-ball field near the Parks and Recreation office at Wasserman Park. Parks and Recreation will also be kicking off the two thousand twenty-two summer concert series on Wednesday, June twenty-second, at Abbey Griffin Park. These are free concerts, these are free concerts, and are held every Wednesday at six PM from June twenty-second to August seventeenth. Concerts will feature a variety of musical performances, including oldies, swing, rhythm and blues, classic rock music, and more to fill the air. Bring your family and friends, blankets and chairs, and a dinner or two to enjoy a free night of entertainment each week. Parks and Recreation is accepting registrations to participate in this year's annual Fourth of July Parade, which will be held on Monday, July fourth, which will begin at one PM. Participating, participants can be as easy as putting a decoration on a bicycle or a vehicle, or it can be as highly decorated float. It is a great way to show your patriotism and get some free advertising for your business or organization at the same time. This is a fun, family-friendly parade for all to enjoy and more local groups and to participate for the better. There is no cost to participate, but advanced registration is required by Friday, July first. In addition, on July fourth, the Rotary is bringing back the pancake breakfast. Public Works has a number of positions opened in their Highway Division. If someone you know is interested in working for the professional group that helps citizens and businesses of Merrimack, please go to the town website and apply today. I could read this statement for several of our departments, so if you're interested for working at the town of Merrimack, please go to the Human Resource page underneath the town website and check out all the job openings. Thank you.
Yeah, didn't you say, Paul, yesterday, that there were like twenty-two positions, something?
Twenty positions coming available in town right now, twenty openings that we're going to fill.
Very good. Thank you, Paul. Comments from the press public, if you'd like to address the council, you could either sit at the table here or come up to the mic over here. And seeing no one, we have no recognitions, resignations, retirements this evening, nor appointments. So our first item is that of a public hearing. Town Council, the whole of public hearing, to consider the acceptance of recommended changes to Chapter one-eleven, conservation areas of the Merrimack Town Code pursuant to Charter Article five. Good evening.
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Can I just get the green light?
You got the green light.
Yep.
I don't have an icon for mine.
You want me to do the PowerPoint that I did last time?
Do you want to get something?
To the council, does the council want to see the PowerPoint again? I know that there were several members missing from that meeting.
Probably wouldn't be a bad idea for me.
Can we get the brief version of it? Sure.
The brief version, absolutely.
Well, I mean.
Yep.
If it's forty pages, then.
No, no, three slides.
Three slides?
And a title slide, so you can't call me a liar, so.
You have some where they do have to get pared down occasionally.
All right, let me. Give me one sec. Here we go. Do that. Here, I'll skip the title slide. Do you have the, do you have the screen behind you and me? Yeah, okay. Okay, so, slide one, so what I wanted to do was to quickly go over what the current Chapter one-eleven looks like. So Chapter one-eleven currently encompasses six parcels around our town. The same restrictions apply to all six parcels. A penalty for violation is in accordance with the RSA thirty-one, colon, thirty-nine, Roman numeral three. That's essentially a violation, so it's punishable up to a thousand dollar fine. And so the restrictions that are included in the current chapter is, is you cannot remain or stay on the property from a half hour after sunset to a half hour before sunrise unless authorized. No fires unless approved by the commission, the Conservation Commission and the Fire Warden. No glass, no throwing or leaving trash, carry out all trash. No alcohol or unlawful drugs, no parking or driving except in designated play areas. No OHRV as defined by RSA two fifteen, dash, A, colon, one, except for fire, police, ambulance, or emergency reasons. No domesticated animals unless on a, on a leash, rein, or in a cage. No discharge of air-powered or spring-powered gun, any type of bow or firearm, and no defacing of building, equipment, tree, shrub, or flower. So that's the current chapter that was originally put in place in nineteen ninety-five by the voters of the town. I've seen very few changes since then. So the proposed update is sixty-four parcels in total versus the six in the current chapter. The same base set of penalties applied to all sixty-four, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say penalties, and I didn't update it. The same base set of restrictions applied to all sixty-four parcels. And there are three general categories of parcels included, so there is the "all." That means this covers every one of them, there's that base set of restrictions on all of them. But it does allow the Town Council or its designee to waive after receiving a recommendation from the Conservation Commission. And that gets back to wording that we talked about the last time I was here with the full council, and I can touch on that a little bit more. There is another group that affects only two out of the sixty-four parcels, and that brings back the hours restriction. So there is, you have to remain out of the property from dawn to dusk, I'm sorry, dusk to dawn. And it can also be waived. And then there is the completely passive group that extends the restrictions to no motorized use at all, including all e-bikes, snowmobiles, doesn't permit the discharge of a firearm, or the taking of wildlife. The term "taking" is a legal term out of the RSA's, but it refers to hunting, trapping, those kinds of things. It does not include fishing. And that applies to thirteen of the sixty-four parcels. And I've used the word "parcels" here because parcels are the, are the, are the tax map parcel numbers that we're including here. Horse Hill, you know, five hundred and sixty-three acres has one, is one parcel, but Greater Woods, as we know it today, is about thirteen parcels. So, so that's why the number looks so big and different. And Paul, did you bring the map? Yeah, okay. All right, I have, I have a version of it if we need to show where the parcels are. And then, you know, the violations, instead of just being per the RSA, the RSA does allow a tiered fine structure, and that's what we're proposing here as well.
Excuse me, can you, the hours restricted comment for two of the sixty-four parcels? That's saying that you can't go on the parcel anytime?
No, you, you can't go on the parcel from, from dusk to dawn. Did I say that right?
It says adds the dawn to dusk, which is morning to evening, and it's already got an evening to morning?
Yeah, I got it backwards, sorry. Yeah, it's at night, you can't be out there at night.
Don't all of them have that?
No, well, all of them in the current chapter does, so, so this is, this is, this change is to.
I don't know what the base sixty-four is, then, sorry, go ahead.
All right, all right, hopefully I can answer your question on the next slide, the last slide.
Great, thank you.
Okay? All right, so what I did is a side-by-side comparison of the proposed and the current. So in the current, you can't remain or stay from a half hour after sunset to a half hour before sunrise. That restriction is the same, but only applies to two out of the sixty-four parcels. Does that make sense now?
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Those two are Wildcat Falls and Riverside Park.
Where is Riverside Park?
That's, that's behind Davidson Drive and, and, and is it Richardson? I forget the other road.
Off Hammer's Road.
Yeah, off Hammer's Road.
Riverside, Davidson, Piedmont, it's down the end.
Yeah, so it, it, it basically is a U-shaped, it's a U-shaped parcel that runs along the river behind a few homes. Okay, so, so basically there's people's homes, and then there is, you know, a few hundred yards, and then there's the river.
And you said, what about those, I'm sorry, Tim, what about those?
Those two, Wildcat Falls and Riverside Park, have the hours restriction, so you can't be out there at night.
Okay.
Of course, it can be waived.
Yeah.
Yep. So, so the, the next thing talks about no fires unless approved by the Conservation Commission or Fire Warden. That applies, that's still the same, but it can be waived, except we've taken the Conservation Commission out of the, out of the approval piece of it directly, you know, because we, I think I got that wording right. No glass, that particular restriction is not included directly, but it is included with the trash restriction. So it got lumped in with trash, except, instead of being a separate line on its own. No alcohol or unlawful drugs, the same applies, and it could be waived or suspended. I believe the word, the wording in the proposed chapter says suspend, I think. No parking or driving except in designated areas, that remains. No OHRV as defined by the RSA, except for, you know, police, fire, and emergency, that also remains the same. We did include Class One e-bikes to be allowed, but excludes Class Two and Class Three e-bikes, which is in line with what we discussed the last time we were here. No domesticated animals unless on a leash, rein, or a cage. We don't have any language related to domesticated animals anymore. We do assume that the dog chapter, which covers dogs, will handle how you handle your dog on that property. No discharge of air-powered, spring-powered, or any type of bow or firearm. The same applies here, except it's directed towards target shooting. So you can't discharge your, your bow, spring-powered, air-powered, or firearm in, if, for, for the purposes of target shooting, and we have a definition of target shooting included, so it's, it's not as broad. No defacing of any building, animal, equipment, all of those things, the same applies, except we added barricade and, and, and rock in here. People have been known to do graffiti all over the rocks, and we're trying to, to slow that down or prevent it. A couple of things that aren't in the current chapter, we included no camping or sleeping overnight, but that also can be waived. And no snowmobiles. Or Class One e-bikes, and no target shooting, or the taking of wildlife out of, on those thirteen specific parcels that we call completely passive. That restriction, that item comes out of the fact that a number of those thirteen parcels have them in the deed, but I'll, I'll tell you that they're not, not all of them have it in their deed, and we can talk about them as well, if you'd like, tonight. And that's all I brought for slides, beyond that, I've got the wording of the, of the actual change, if you'd like to go through it in pieces. We tried to make the wording as simple as possible, so we had a discussion last time about waiving the use of unlawful drugs and stuff like that, something we obviously would probably never want to do. But it is, to make the wording easier and less confusing for, for people to understand, as well as to, to, you know, to make sure that we covered as many bases as we could with the waiver privilege that, that you all asked for, we, we put that wording that way. The language was reviewed by our town's attorney, and he provided feedback on it, and I believe he is good with the wording as provided. He does have a concern about the no-target-shooting activity, and I, I brought this up at the last time we were here, and I believe I brought it up in the past, but essentially, there's a couple of different RSA's that come into play when the town wants to put a no-target-shooting type of activity here. One of them is there's a general RSA that doesn't allow usipality to restrict the use of firearms, and, and how that wording applies, and would be applied in this case, has never been tested in, in a court of law, as far as I know, and I believe as, of course, according to our town attorney, the same is true. The other RSA that comes into play is, is we are the property owners, and we have property owner rights, and property owners do have the right to restrict target shooting on their property. So we've chosen to, to take that path. If anyone wants to challenge it in court, it would be the first time that it would happen, and we're asking the Town Council to be bold enough to, to keep this in our wording, because it's been in our wording since nineteen ninety-five, as well as nineteen ninety-two in the Parks and Rec, and I think there's also two thousand and something for the Horse Hill Nature Preserve chapters. But again, I, I'm happy to go through all the wording, if you'd like.
I just, I hate to bring you all the way back to it, but I'm not understanding the Wildcat Falls Riverside property. It says you cannot remain or stay a half hour after sun, sunset, or before sunrise, and that's the same except for those two parcels, so I'm not, I don't.
Well, it says same, but only for two parcels, is my wording up there, and that's what I'm trying to.
So every other parcel can be?
Yeah, okay, so my wording is confusing, I agree.
Was it, okay, it easily could have been made.
Yeah, no, my, 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 yeah, the language in, is much clearer in here, in the actual wording of the, of the proposed chapter. My summary is not as clear as it should have been.
And then the other thing, I just need to clarify, I'm sorry, I wasn't here for your last meeting. So I, and I was paying attention to the meeting, but I wasn't well, so it just wasn't all completely working for me. But when it comes to the hunting component of it, I know there's a lot of these tiny parcels scattered around. Where is, is hunting precluded in all the properties?
No, no, so it's, it's thirteen of the parcels. The biggest one is, is the conservation area at Wasserman Park. That's, so the park's on one side, the conservation's on the other side, and that is written into the, into the restrictions that are part of the deed that our town selectmen agreed to back in nineteen ninety-two when we bought the property. So that's the biggest parcel. Three more parcels abut that one, those are parcels the commission had acquired ten years ago now, and we felt that, in the woods, it's hard to tell when you're on one parcel or another, and we thought if they're abutting, that we would treat all four parcels, the three new ones in the conserva, in the conservation area the same way, and have them all have the same restrictions. There is, there's two along Old King's Highway off of, begins with a D, Doll Road, that are behind a few homes. There is Wildcat Falls, which currently has that restriction. I would have to, right, let me take a quick look where the others are. I believe another one is, is Gilmore Hill, Memorial Forest, which is.
That was an deed, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's, that's also the way we accepted that deed. I do have a older document I prepared that I.
So the large, I mean, I guess the large parcels of Greater Woods and Horse Hill.
Yeah, so Horse Hill, Greater Woods, all of those don't have any restriction on the taking of wildlife. Yep.
And I appreciate that, I, okay. Nancy?
Yeah, I just, could you go back just to the slide before that? I just had a question around the bottom. Okay, the completely passive paragraph on the bottom.
Yep.
So does that mean that fifty-one of the sixty-four parcels, you can discharge a firearm?
You, you can discharge a firearm for the, for the taking of wildlife, not for target shooting. So the target, target shooting restrictions across all properties, parcels.
I just wonder if it would be more clear if it says "for" the taking of wildlife as opposed to "or."
I think, even though this is bulleted, really, I think if he pulls up the language, it explains it a lot clearer what he's talking about, firearms, shooting, target shooting. It's because, remember the three categories that, that Tim talked about, the "all," the semi, and then the other. And it, this, this is a lot easier to read, so to speak, versus. Yeah, that's the one, right there. Yep, okay. It's number E. Yep. So this is for all the. Okay, let me, let me make it a little bit smaller so you can see the whole section at once. So this is in your packet, it's, it's right after the public hearing notice, and it's the language there. So, I just think it, this might answer some of the questions when you're looking at it.
I don't think it answers mine, though. I, I'm looking at the graph we have.
Yeah, let me, let me go down.
Isn't this the same right here?
So this, so the, what you're referring to is noted in eleven, one-eleven, dash, three.
Okay, great.
So how can I help you?
It doesn't really, but that's okay. I'm sure I'm just not understanding.
Yeah, so ask me your question again, so I can help you.
I, I'm, I was looking at the, the, and I recognize in the different sections that the, the individual conservation areas designated are listed, and I think that's what I was confused about. When I looked at the list, it, the way it appeared to me was that fifty-one out of the sixty-four that it could be weapons, weapons could be discharged. I recognize that that's separate when you're talking about the taking of wildlife, but it said, I was thinking "for" the taking, for that purpose, as opposed to target shooting, or something else. So, I don't know, I think that was confusing me. And then the only other question that I had was on the, the part about, I mean, I think it's, we discussed it at the last meeting, that clearly we're not going to make unlawful taking of drugs lawful. But I just thought it would be simpler in that second column if it just said, maybe, the exception, alcohol exception, to clarify that, because otherwise it just looks like either one of them still could be.
So, I think what you're referring to is in this letter C here. "No person shall use, consume, bring, or carry any alcoholic beverage or unlawful drugs within any conservation area." So that's the way we have it. The, the, the waiver part comes in all the way at the bottom under H, and it says, "The Town Council or its designee may suspend any of these rules of conduct for any purpose group of people for any conservation area or portion of a conservation area after seeking and reviewing a recommendation of the Conservation Commission."
So rather than individually, just that group, yeah.
Yeah, so the whole group is covered there. We would think that your designee or yourselves, whatever version of this body is in the future, would, would not want to waive or suspend that.
Thank you.
Harbor?
So I know in the past, there have been groups out doing target practice at Horse Hill, I believe it was, when I was out there one time. So in other words, that whole no-firearms, bows, et cetera, could be waived by the town manager or, you know, or the council's designee.
Right, yeah.
If, to be approved. Just want to make sure I understood that. Also, I'm getting back to the number, to that first one again about the hours restriction.
Yep.
There are two parcels that don't fall under that? Because I'm reading the actual language in one-eleven, dash, two, dash.
One-eleven, dash, two A is what gives the hours restriction, and then down at.
Because I think it's in B that it says.
Yeah, which the two parcels are.
And why are those two parcels different?
So one is Wildcat Falls, and that's the way it's always been, and it's, it's in a neighborhood, basically. And we felt that we would leave the same restriction in place, because the neighborhood is used to not having people out there at night. The parking lot, if you park in there, your lights will shine into people's back windows.
Okay, the way I was reading it, it meant that there were two parcels that didn't have the restrictions. So all of the parcels have a restriction, which I think is easier for folks to remember.
Yeah, yeah, and, and we can go down that path, if that's what the, the council wants to do. But the way it reads here, it says, "Conservation areas designated for hours restrictions in this section include Parcels five C, five sixty-eight, and four B thirty-five."
Which leads me to believe that there are some that do not.
Correct.
So why isn't it consistent across the board?
Because we found that the uses of Horse Hill, where it's a little more secluded and doesn't really bother people, people like to get out there, they like to enjoy the parcels at night.
God bless them, because I trip in the daytime, never mind the night.
You, you would be amazed how many people actually use our properties at night. Great Greater Woods as well, it's, it's great to go see the stars, there's no light to obscure your, your vision.
Would it be better to actually state what those parcels are versus giving numbers? Because I tell you, I don't know which parcel's the which.
Just to be able to clarify.
Just to have it in English.
During the last thing, we were, at the very end, one-eleven, dash, five, I had asked that the addendum be to name those numbers, which would address your question.
Yep, because.
And I, I believe Paul has a solution for that? Talk about three and throw them to the basket. Yeah, my solution was just in this area saying, the following areas on the, the attachment A are, the following areas designed, designed, designated as conservation areas are included in Attachment A, and then have the parcel and the name of the parcel in an attachment A, yeah, and that, that was, that was my solution. And actually, we do have a map as well. Yeah. To, to, to include as well as part of the, the attachment, you know, A and B. That's, I know, that's really small, but if you're on your computer, you can blow it up. Yeah, we could do something like this.
Exactly, that's right. So for the final reading, that would be done, because that's going to have to be finalized.
Right, yes. Okay. If that's what, how the council would proceed. The other, the other thing about the unlawful or illegal drugs, I talked to the police, deputy police chief, and just having it in this, this ordinance doesn't make it any stronger or non, not stronger. If somebody's carrying illegal drugs, whether it's on town property or conservation property or private business, it's treated the same, just because it says that they're not allowed on town property, it doesn't give it any more weight to whether or not they're going to arrest somebody or not. So I think some of the discussion we had last time was around, well, if we waived that, we'd have to waive it just for the alcohol and not the whole section. So if you just want to pull that out, you, you can pull that out as well, because it's, it's not going to make a difference to the police department whether it's in this ordinance or not, and that's what I was asked to do.
Okay. Anybody have anything further?
So I was just going to say what you finally said, which was that this list of numbers and names and maps and parcels doesn't tell me anything, so I'm glad to hear that. We're going to do something more appropriate or more.
Yeah, that was recognized the first time.
I mean, obviously, the names of sixty-four parcels doesn't necessarily mean anything either, but we need some way to, to make, make a connection with where we're talking about. And there's probably twelve or twenty that, that are more prominent than others. There's a lot of small pieces, right?
Yeah, the trouble we have is not all of them are actually named, but they all have a street address in, in our tax system. Right? Right, so we figured the street address would be as close as we could get to be consistent. Okay?
Okay, well, that's certainly better than five-eight, dash, C or something. Thank you.
All right, is there anything further from the council right now, at this point? See none. I'll open the public hearing at seven-thirty. If anybody would like to speak to the proposed changes to Chapter one-eleven, please step to the mic. Proceed next to Tim. Okay, see nothing, and close the public hearing at seven-thirty-one.
Can I ask you another question?
Of course, yes.
I mean, we had to add this because we only.
I mean, we had to add this because we only originally talked about six, now we're up to sixty-four. Did you leave any wording in here to allow an expansion of conservation property? Or do we have to readjust this next time there's two more pieces?
Well, that was part of the solution Paul was suggesting the last time we were here, that there's a way to add parcels or change the list, in other words, without having a formal, you know, three-cycle process.
Or something.
Yeah, that, if you can, you can amend an appendix without having to go through the whole ordinance process. It's kind of like what we did with some of our fee structures.
Right.
Remember when we went through all that process, it would be the same concept as, see fee structure. We'd say, see attached.
I mean, this talks, I don't know if this even mentions the specific numbers you did in your presentation, but does it actually say sixty-four parcels anywhere or?
In, in the ordinance, the wording, no, no.
Okay, so the appendix then would have that list, and this would apply to anything.
Correct.
And if there's special restrictions there outlined in the ordinance.
Right, so to do his solution, the, the, the thirteen that we have right now would probably need to go through the full cycle unless you want to have an appendix B for those or however you want to do it. You can, okay, all right.
I think that would be easier because it is listed 111, one, 111, two, 111, third, three, four.
I'll let, I'll let you work on that wording.
Yeah, with you.
So will these chapters then say see appendix A, and it'll list the parcels?
No, just number five would say see appendix A, so they would have to.
For list of parcels under this. Yeah, well, I, I guess my concern is, is like, if you take 111 dash three, right? And it lists the parcels there.
Then we, yeah, you're right, would have to be see appendix A there too.
Exactly.
Yes, you are right, Andy. Counselor Hunter, I'm sorry. That, that we would have to go through it.
Can we make that in the minutes? That Paul said Andy was right? One time.
Yeah, okay. It's been a long day, come on. It's all been, come on, please, be nice to me tonight.
All right, I, I just have, for my clarity, I, I didn't know if you could real quickly just touch on the motorized vehicles, e-bikes, and that type of thing, and where are those allowed and where are they not allowed?
Okay, so, uh, those restrictions pop up right in the beginning. So that covers, that's all in D, D dash two, or D number two. So right now, the way this is worded is that there'd be no allowed use of OHRVs or class two or class three e-bikes.
Those more powerful bikes, is that what it is?
Yeah, so class one allows the vehicle to, the, the bike to move up to twenty miles an hour with, with electric assist, but you have to be pedaling to have electric assist. And, and it is a legal definition, as you can see, it's in the RSA. And there's stickers that should be on the bike and, and all of that. Class two removes that you have to pedal, so there's a throttle of some form on the bike, whether it's a thumb throttle or, or a turn like a motorbike or something like that. Class three goes back to pedal assist, but it's up to twenty-eight miles an hour. So it's a more powerful electric motor.
Okay. All right, so with no properties, OHRVs are allowed?
The way it's written now, yes. So, so we, you know, we did discuss this, and I know there's some concern around this subject. And that's why we have the language at the bottom that allows the town council to designate an area or an entire parcel to, to waive that for a person or a group of people. The concern that the Conservation Commission has is that historically now in our town, since we've had these larger parcels, Greater Woods, Horse Hill, and the others, is that the users of OHRVs have not participated in the maintenance that's, that's created by the use of OHRVs. So they'll go out and use the trails that are designated. Actually, Greater Woods is the only one that has, that allows OHRVs right now. And they'll do their thing and they'll leave, and when we have a, when there's a cleanup day or a maintenance day, they won't participate. For a while, the right riders were participating. They had members on, on the Greater Woods Subcommittee, and over the, over the first year, it kind of drifted away, and, and the right riders stopped participating. And then we, we continued to have issues with OHRV users actually using other trails as well on that parcel. And basically, the volunteers that, that do support the property support their use, and we, we believe that the OHRV users should support their use. Or maybe the town wants to support that use with your budget, that's up to you, obviously.
Because that is a question that I asked you, it seems like a year ago, probably was more, when you first came to us and said you were beginning, or you were in the middle, I think, of the process at that point. And I asked, because I'm a visual guy, I have to see things, and so I asked where damage was, so I could see what the destruction was, and you had said that there really wasn't any. So if there's not a problem, I don't, you know, that's, that's the tear for me, I just.
Well, so I don't have good pictures to show you because there's very little use of OHRVs. And really, we don't have a problem anymore on the other properties. Only Greater Woods is where we've seen it now. I have not been on the commission for over a year. I'm not, I don't have my pulse on it. The chair of the commission is behind me, Steve. He may have more, more or newer information. But I can tell you that when those uses were happening, there, there is the normal rutting that goes with cornering on, with a, with, with a vehicle like that. There's the tire marks, there's the, there's the imprints or, and the hitting of the beginning of it, of the bridge that requires maintenance over time, so. So there is some maintenance, and, and the, the mountain bikers come out, they participate, they bring their equipment, they help us with their, the maintenance that they create. The horseback riders used to, I don't know how much we get, use there is now. The, the snowmobiles, which are allowed because they're not considered OHRVs. The snowbuds used to come out and participate very regularly around the properties. So we feel that this user group should also participate, but of course, it's up to you as to how you.
No, I appreciate that, and I, I just, I do recall how properties, the purchasing of properties has been sold in the past, and it is, of course, always all-inclusive to make sure that those, everybody fully was into the purchase. And so, so no, if there, if there's damage that can be seen, I would really like to see it, because I would go out and, and do that, but, but I appreciate it. I, thanks for your, you know, for that was.
Nancy?
In response to what you said, too, I, I think I feel a little better, because I'm the one who brought that up the last time, is when you point out each section, if there is a group who does want to come forward and will take responsibility for the maintaining and stuff like that, then they would go present that proposal to the conservation, obviously, and then would be presented to the town council. So I think that's an option, that if there are people or groups that want to be able to maintain or establish or whatever those trails, there is a procedure, a process by which they can take responsibility and basically regain that privilege.
Yeah.
So that helps me feel better.
Yeah, so, so that wording and the way that's put there mimics what we have in the Horse Hill Nature Preserve Master Plan document, when we put that together years ago. To date, no one has come forward to actually do that on Horse Hill, and therefore, there's no OHRV use on Horse Hill. And except for a rogue rider every now and then, we really don't have an issue out there because people understand it's, it's just not what you can do out there.
Robert, were you all set? You're good. All right, any further discussion?
Well, I, I just want to say, you know, initially, I'm, I'm hesitant to restrict anything from any group of users in town. That's my initial gut, gut reaction. However, I will say, I do recognize we have a group of individuals that are contributing, volunteering their time on the Conservation Commission and maintaining these, these properties. And so, like, like you said, Nancy, I'm okay because there's a way that if somebody wants to participate in that, the maintenance of those grounds and, and who knows, maybe even get involved in the Conservation Commission, there's a way that they can go about do that, come here and get permission to be able to use those properties. But at the same time, it doesn't ignore our group of volunteers that are putting all their time into maintaining these properties and, and running the Conservation Commission. We're not ignoring their concerns, we're addressing it here, so. Again, I hate to restrict it from any group in town, but it is a good compromise, I think.
And there's an option for them.
Yes.
Right. Is there anything further? What's the pleasure of the council?
I'm all set.
All right, do it.
A move that we move the upgrade or the changes to chapter eleven to consent agenda on our next agenda. Second. Go ahead. Move approval.
Nancy.
On the consent agenda, yep.
Nancy Murphy. Any further discussion on your motion?
Yes. Because you're asking for a change in an appendix to be put in, I'd recommend that you just move it to old business so that you can look at it if you want to discuss that instead of having a consent and move it off consent to talk. It's half dozen one, six of another, but.
Okay, why don't we move it to the next agenda, next agenda item, as a regular item.
Second, yep.
All right. Any further discussion on your motion? Do you know, call the question, all those in favor, signify by standing on, standing on.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, seven zero zero. Thanks, Tim.
You're welcome. Just, just so we're clear, the only change is to fix the parcel naming and, and put them in the appendix Cs, correct?
Nothing about illegal drugs. I'm all for those. It's up, we talked about that sales law.
I know.
About what?
The illegal drugs, should we keep that?
Well, I, I think once he reviewed the actual language and it shows that it's just a, you know, H at the bottom of that section, I was okay with it. I mean.
I'm just asking, I guess Tim's asking.
You're, you're going to muddy some water if you want to go out and start exempting individual items.
I think, I think the, the option you have is just to remove that language completely.
The illegal drugs.
Right, because they're illegal no matter what, right?
Right. I think, Nancy, you had the, the issue with it, so I think it's.
Last week, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think what confused me more was the second column of changes, but, so it looks like they're spelled out specifically, where in the proposed language, it really isn't spelled out specifically like that, it's all included in that final exception scope. So I just thought, I just thought it was confusing with how in the same line you could consider exceptions. It gave the appearance of allowing exceptions for legal drugs, which I know nobody would grant, but I just thought it made no sense to have it look like that, so I get what you did. Thank you for all the time that you put into this.
You're welcome.
I got one more. All righty.
All right.
Thanks, Tim. All right, next on the agenda, legislative updates from our state reps. Seen in here? Oh, somebody would have printed them off. Bear with me, sorry. No, okay, there's, there are none. Town manager report. Yeah, that's true.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On June second, household hazardous waste collection event was a success. The event had a total of one hundred and ninety-one vehicles delivering hazardous waste to the facility representing one hundred and ninety-eight households, of which fourteen percent or twenty-seven vehicles represented twenty-seven households were Merrimack residents. The next event will be August sixth, from eight AM till noon at twenty-five Crown Street in Nashville. The Highway Division has completed the spring mowing and mowing of the closed landfill. Mowing of thirty-plus parcels, thirty-plus acres of landfill is required by New Hampshire DES post-closure permit to keep large growth from damaging the liner of the landfill. The Highway Division mows the landfill at least twice a year. The Highway Division's roadside mowing program kicked off the season. The program mows and cuts growth along a hundred and eighty miles of public roads to help maintain site distances, site distances at intersections and safe distance of trees from traveling public. Crews of the Highway Division were working to maintain the gravel shoulder of roads to eliminate road drop-offs and support the edge of pavement, redefining drainage swales to promote proper drainage and keep water out of road beds, and the trimming of trees along the edge of roads in encroachment of trucks and other large vehicles. That will occur throughout the summer. The wastewater phase three, four update. The wastewater upgrade project was awarded to Methuen on May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The following is summary of the project and the budget status. Current construction contracts amounted to nineteen point three million dollars. It includes a coronation building, sawdust building demolition. Total expended through May two thousand twenty-two is just over five point one million. Twenty-six percent of the project is completed on a cost basis. We have about eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars remaining in our contingency for the project. So the project is moving along. Some of the bigger, we're waiting on some of the bigger equipment to be delivered. Their lead times are, because of shortages and, and things of that sort, have been extended a little bit, but we should be on track for completion of next summer with the project. Public. Sorry. Community Development Department has kicked off the two thousand twenty-three fiscal year, two thousand three capital improvement plan process, sending out projects for solicitation letters to departments, the school district, Merrimack Village District, and the library. Staff hopes that by starting the process in June rather than in August or September, as in past, the CIP will be able to be completed by the planning board in early fall, making it a more useful tool for the elected governing bodies to use in their budgeting process. That is all I have.
The, Paul, the eight hundred K that's left in contingency, do you know roughly percentage what that's left of the remaining project? I mean, do, is that ten percent contingency? Do you know that answer? And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
I can find out. Just bear with me. It's around, right around five percent, four point five percent left.
Four point five percent of the remaining effort that's to go, or four point five?
Five percent of the total project.
Of the total project.
Total project, yes.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Anything further? On the next, on the agenda, on the roll business, the town council to receive a yearly update on the MS four program. Program has made progress, and as a requirement of the permit, we must have the opportunity for public input as part of the process. So Dawn is here this evening.
Yes.
To give us that update.
So, Mr. Chair, as you stated, this is a requirement for MS four permit that we do yearly updates in front of the town council and to get public input. Flyers, pamphlets, things of that sort have been out and about in the community. Dawn has been doing a great job on this. We lost our lead person, our lead coordinator, so to speak, in DPW admin just this last month, so Dawn has had to take on more responsibility in the project where she was overseeing it. We are moving forward. She does have a brief PowerPoint presentation for the council to go over tonight to make us in compliance with our MS four permit.
Good evening, Dawn.
Thank you. I will be as brief as possible, but I do have to hit certain points. So, MS four, what does it stand for? And this is for the people at home that haven't heard of this before. It's the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. M with four S's. It's my favorite. So this is the June two thousand twenty-two update. This is a culvert that is in town, just to let you know. So what if communities are affected by this MS four? So EPA are the ones that determine this, and they were determined back in two thousand when they started the two thousand three permit. And then in two thousand ten, when that census came out, they added more communities. So we're now up to sixty regulated communities. Sixteen of those community, communities have waivers. There are three non-traditional, such as the Manchester VA, UNH, and there's one other one. So that totals forty-seven regulated communities. The next update that's coming out will be, well, actually, this is going to be year five, starting in July first. It's, this is year four I've been here doing this, under this particular permit. So every five years, this permit's supposed to be updated, just to let you know. We haven't seen that yet, it's probably going to get extended. I'm guessing that's what I'm hearing from the EPA. So most of the area, this is the state of New Hampshire, and the areas are colored, are the ones that. are the ones that were the sixty communities. Most of them, as you can see, are in the southwest to central New Hampshire. The areas that are in yellow are the ones that got the waivers. The ones in orange are the Great Bay, and the ones in the two green shades are the Merrimack River, basically, the coalition. So we have two different coalition groups. That's what it's come down to. The seacoast has theirs because they deal with Great Bay, which means they deal with nitrogen. They deal with a lot more than we have to deal with here. We had the Manchester and Nashua Coalition Groups. We came together, and we've created the New Hampshire Lower Merrimack Valley Stormwater Coalition, NHLMV is what we basically call ourselves. We have eighteen communities that participate. Not every town participates in these, but we have eighteen that basically feed into the Merrimack River, hence the Merrimack River. We got NHDES, the Department of Environmental Services, involved early in on this second permit. They attend all of the coalition meetings. They help us set the meetings up. They keep our minutes. They keep the blog. They help us create all of our templates. They help with the subcommittees who help also to create the templates that we all use. We're trying to reduce the costs by joining together, basically. And they've recently, in the last few years, have established much-needed connections between our coalition groups and the EPA. So we sit down once or twice a year and have meetings with the EPA so that we're all coming on the same page. So it's communication that's what we really need. Year four requirements, our year four ends June thirtieth. So, you know, we have to document all of our activities, everything that we do. It's, and we have a stormwater management plan, which we affectionately call our swamp, SWMP. So that's our swamp. That is to be changed every year. I'm in the process, and I have to change it for this current year. That is going to be available on the website, and anybody can, you know, comment on that, and that's what we need to have is any comments provided. And I'll be updating that and putting that on to the website by next week. The old one's on there, but we need to update that. And what that does is establish our minimum control measures, which we call the MCMs. So I'll say MCM instead of minimum control measure all the time. This is an example of what the DES has done for us. Every year, the EPA permit gets more and more things added to it. So, for example, the last three years have been in this annual requirement column. So every year, we do all these X's, and we will continue them forward every year. They outlined year four, and you'll see that each one of these has a new line item. So all of year fours are going to end up in the annual, and then next year, we're going to be doing year five and getting more rows to this. Everything that's in yellow is something that we are working with DES in creating our templates. We did the last template today. We had a stormwater meeting today, and they put the last template that we need for this year on the blog so we can use that. So there's seven pages of this. This is not small. This is seven, and I'm not going through each one of these, don't worry. But just to give you a feel for what it is that we're doing, every year, this gets to be more and more. And what we've been doing for the last four years is basically getting our information and gathering it. What do we own? Where's all our problems? You know, where do we store things? What kind of salt do we, what do we sweep? How many catch basins do we clean? All these types of things. We're gathering all of our data. That's what we've been doing for the last four years. It's going to change next year. We are going to be doing, what are you going to do about this? What improvements are you going to make? What retrofits are you going to make so that that culvert doesn't end up flowing into the lake without being treated? But we don't own land, so it's going to be a little difficult. But that's what we're going to be faced with in the coming years. MCMs. So this is the main thrust of what this program is. You can read them. MCM one, public education. Two, public involvement. Three, illicit discharge. That's the biggest chunk of all of this. MCM four is construction site stormwater runoff. That's more under community development and what do they need to do. Post-construction, which is in our code one sixty-seven. Good housekeeping, that is all of the town and school-owned properties. We got a clarification on that. We have to include the school properties even though they're not town. So we have to include those within our plans. The new one this year, and I apologize because your papers that you have with this does not have appendix F and H. That's the big one for this year, and that's the templates that I just got. But those are the requirements related to the discharge for certain impairments. Ours is phosphorus, and we have some bacteria. Those are things that we're going to have to create plans for in order to move forward, in moving forward, I should say. The MCM one is the funnest one. So we target different areas, the residents, commercial business, developers, and the industrial properties. This year, we're going to be sending out letters to the industrial owners. We've had a pamphlet out. We have pamphlets out for all of these, and they've been out and in various locations. We have them on the website, and we bring them to different events that we hold. So every community creates their own educational pamphlets, but they're usually from the templates the DES has helped to create. Ours are out for distribution all year long, and they're all on the website, which I just went over. So our first one is dog poop. Favorite of everybody's. So this gets distributed to forty-five hundred dog owners in this town. Every time you go to get your license, you get one of these flyers. Carry your plastic bag. Always pick up your poop. Dispose of it in the trash can. And this says, never put unbagged waste, never put any waste in the storm drain. Nothing, I gotta cross that one out. That's a, yeah. So in addition to this, last year, I have the interns, which you all know and I appreciate because they help me immensely. Last year, they created a couple of videos. So if you indulge me for just a minute.
Merrimack is working with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services to promote proper disposal of pet waste. Unscuffed feces contains an abundance of bacteria that wash into local waterways and pollute our natural resources. There are currently four thousand four hundred dogs registered in the town of Merrimack. That's a lot of dog waste. Stormwater and snowmelt pick up pollutants from dog waste and wash them down storm drains where they travel into Merrimack's waterways. This can be toxic to humans, pets, and wildlife, and can make water recreation activities dangerous. Always carry a plastic or decomposable bag when you walk your dog. Grab it, bag it, and trash it. By picking up your pet's waste, you can do your part to keep Merrimack clean and healthy. Thank you for watching.
Never thought I'd be talking about dog waste.
That's cute, though. Makes his point.
So I really appreciate all of the help that we had on that and creating that. And I can't get out of this, it won't let me out. There we go, okay. So thank you for indulging me on that. So then we come to green grass, clear water. It's another pamphlet we have. We have to choose the right grass seed, all of that sort of good stuff, and choose the right fertilizer. I actually held a workshop with New Hampshire Sea Grant people and UNH and a couple other associations back in April. It was not well-attended, but this, the video is on the TV and the blog, so you can go back and watch it. It's about an hour and a half long. It describes exactly what you need to do. So there was something extra that we had done. It was free of charge, and it was really informative. So I encourage people to go back and to be able to watch that. In addition to that, if you indulge me for one more minute, these are short. So the kids also created this video. Am I going? There we go.
rake it or leave it? What should you do with your leaves and grass clippings? They can be a valuable resource or a source of water pollution. Decaying leaves and grass kill critters and wetlands like swamps and surface waters like streams, rivers, lakes, and ponds. Dumping yard waste near bodies of water contributes to stream algae odors, and it's against the law. Here's what you can do instead. Drop off your yard waste at the transfer station for composting. Remove the bag from your lawn mower or use a mulching lawn mower. Leave the clippings to add organic matter and recycle nutrients and avoid having to dispose of the grass clippings. You can also start backyard composting away from surface waters. Remember, never dispose of leaves or clippings in or near storm drains, drainage channels, wetlands, or water bodies. And thank you for doing your part.
So it is against the law, by the way, just to let you know. Well, come back. There we go. The rake it or leave it, we're considering making another video. I have a new group of interns, so it'll be interesting to see. They're quite, got quite the dynamic this year, so this should be interesting. So they choreograph, and then Nick helps us to be able to put these all together. We also have one for the septic system, so half of the town is on private septic systems. We pass out to the pumpers to give them these flyers, and I think it might have gotten derailed during COVID a little bit. I'm going down tomorrow to be able to check on this, but that was something. And then we also keep track of how many people actually, when they pump, they tell us who they pumped from, so we can keep track. If somebody's having a, going to be having a problem, if they're pumped more than two, three times a year, we know they're having, something's going on. So it's something that we can watch and monitor. If we find some of the storm drains or whatever have a high E. coli, something in there, we can tell that they're probably, you know, having an issue. So we can narrow it down. It helps us to narrow things down a little bit. MCM two is public involvement, hence I'm here tonight, hence we also need to have some input on our swamp plan. We also hold Touch a Truck Hazardous Waste Day, Adopt a Road, and the EverSource Breon Event. Those are all considered events that EPA wants, would like to see. I mean, they're not required, but the more we do and the more activities we do with the public, then the better off. MCM three is the Big Lift. That's the illicit discharge. I do have to come before you to change the code one sixty-seven. We've been working on it. Last year, I ended up going to DES and working with them through some legal terms that we needed to overcome so that we could put them into the chapter one sixty-seven. I made a mistake on this. We had one illicit discharge last year. We had no stormwater discharges that I know of. The sanitary sewer overflow is taken care of by wastewater, and we are constantly updating our mapping system. Ongoing all the time, outfall inventory, interconnections, we rank them. We do dry weather outfall, which we had just begun when the interns came. I believe we've only done fourteen or sixteen of them out of the eighty-eight total. There are a few we no longer have to do out of the eighty-eight. They've been eliminated. We will also have to begin this year wet weather sampling. If they hit certain thresholds, then we've got to go out and do them during the rain events, whether that be middle of the night, day, whatever. So that's going to be another interesting. That's followed up by rankings. The rankings are always changing, depends upon what we find. Catchment investigations. So if we had, we had one last year, we had a big problem, an E. coli that was going into the Merrimack River. We had to trace that all the way back up, and we ended up tracing it back. It was up Depot Street and out towards F. E. Everett, and there was a little pond out there, and there were geese in it. There's nothing I can do about the geese, but that's where it was coming from. But I had to, we had to sample all the way up through to be able to prove that. So that's what we have to be doing from now on. Employee training, that's another big one, especially with highway. How do they find? How do they know what illicit discharges are? Our objective is to minimize and eliminate the erosion control for, this is MCM four, I'm sorry, stormwater. This is the construction, private construction sites. So they have been doing for quite a while, being able to maintain all of their discharge on their site and only letting off the amount that was there prior to construction. There are a lot of standards. They have to do the detention basins and all of that. That's what the EPA is looking for the town to start doing. What do we do with the things that we've been just dumping out into the impaired waters? They have been having to do this for quite a while. What we hadn't been doing, even though it was in chapter one sixty-seven, is that we had not been doing our post-construction and our operations and maintenance plans. We weren't really diligent about that. We are now because that was in part of our audit. So we did. The other thing I am doing is updating the two thousand six construction standards totally, and then I'm also introducing the erosion control standards within those documents so that we can not have them in site plan or other places that, because they apply across the board, not necessarily in just a construction atmosphere. Post-construction, this is what I just went over. That is after the fact. So we make sure that they give us the as-built plans. We have digital copies so that they can, we can put it onto our GIS. We hold those meetings. We make sure that they have the operations and maintenance. We also require that this runs with the property. It cannot stop when the property is sold, so it's put right on the plans. You shall submit a report once a year from now on. If that thing, you know, detention basin or whatever it is, is in existence, and they have all different kinds of BMPs. Six is back at our, the town's facilities. So it's parks and open spaces. I didn't realize we had so many pieces of land. I mean, we've got lists and lists of everything in all the buildings, and where do we keep the pesticides and herbicides and salt, and how is it contained, and all kinds of reports. Vehicles and equipment, storage of the vehicles, bills, containment, how are we going to contain it if it does wash water? You know, what do we do with that? Infrastructure, our street sweeping, our catch basin cleaning, that is going to increase. It has to increase with the next coming year. Due to our sampling, there are certain areas that we are going to have to increase and do it twice a year. Could be more. And we have developed a stormwater pollution prevention plan. This is not the swamp, this is the SWIP. So that has a whole different, so each facility needs to have their own SWIP plan. The new one, and this again is not in your packet because I just created, this is appendix F and H, which I just got ahold of today. These are things that I have to create before June thirtieth. So complete the phosphorus source identification report. Calculate the baseline phosphorus, allowable phosphorus load, the phosphorus reduction requirement. Provide a lake phosphorus control plan scope. Additional street sweeping requirements for high pollutant loading areas, evaluating the retrofit, the BMPs for the high pollutant areas. This is getting ready for doing what the actual construction of, how are we going to treat our runoff? I will tell you, we got an SRF loan for seventy-five thousand dollars, the Bebusuk Lake. We are working a study right now. They've been doing the survey in the last few weeks to try to get us some answers for what can we do in that area. And, I mean, it was seventy-five thousand dollars worth of survey, but it's just going to be a basic study plan, and then we'll have to take that from there and determine what we're, so that's already starting to meet our next year's. And then we have to record any modifications we make. For example, a couple of years ago, we did Executive Park. We narrowed that up, if you ever, if you noticed. We did some narrowing up and some changing around, some, added some drainage, and that we put on the. And that we put on the EPA annual report. So that was something that we did as a retrofit. And I believe that's all I have. Longer than you wanted, I apologize.
Perfect. Thank you, Dawn. Uh, Barbara.
Dawn, just a couple of questions, and thank you for your presentation. So why did the coordinator leave?
Not for anything else, but a better opportunity.
Okay. Something to know when we hire the new one. And for the green grass and clear, clear water slide, how do they know what the right fertilizer is or what the right grass seed is? Or how much to apply other than what it states on the bag?
Watch the video.
Oh, you see.
The video will help you.
People don't have an hour and a half to sit there and watch it, so. Even I don't have an hour and a half.
I'll see what I can do to create.
Interns.
Some type of, yeah, yeah, well.
We can look at creating with Nicholas a PSA.
Yeah, something that.
Like we did with the dog.
Short, yeah. This is what you need because.
Okay.
And then um. I had something else. While I'm looking. So why isn't Lake Winnipesaukee area on this list of places to look at? I mean, we're not, it seems like it's all concentrated in southern New Hampshire.
It is.
Has even concrete got out of it?
Yeah, well, it's, concrete is working, but um, yes, you're right. And concrete's been a very sore point for many years.
Okay.
I will tell you that Laconia has joined us. Even though they are not in it, they are already starting because they can see the writing on the wall. It's based on density.
Okay.
That's the way, and they, I'm sure each year you watch, they keep expanding.
Expanding.
More, or not every year. Every time they come out with a new permit, they expand it.
So on the MCM four, the construction site stormwater runoff control, you mentioned that construction and erosion control, you know, isn't part of now the what the construction teams or the the engineers have to submit? Is the, who gets that? Does it?
Well.
Who mo- and who monitors it going forward?
Yes. So um it's before they begin construction, before they put anything, any shovels in the ground, we have a pre-construction meeting. So they have to have their operations and maintenance plan. They have to have their erosion control plan. Um, and then they get told about chap- they get handed chapter 167 and a whole packet. And I actually make them sign off that they've got received that packet. So when they come back and say, you didn't tell me, I can say, yes, I did.
So that's not something that's gonna be coming before the planning board? That's something that gets handled out of community development as well?
It's out of community development. Um, and it depends what project it is, whether it's community development or public works.
Hmm.
It depends what it is. Um, community development gets all of the stormwater reports. There are weekly reports every week. Every open project sent, anything more than 20,000 um square feet, or 20,000 square feet, yes. Sorry, it's late, and I've had a long day too. Um, anything greater than that, they have to submit a report weekly on erosion control. And part of the upgrade updating of the regulation is going to be either having that as an an engineer or what I learned today is that the EPA has changed their their construction general permit. Um, and they are going to require certified inspectors. So they are offering the program for free. I'm gonna have to go and take that, actually, it's all gonna be online.
Hmm.
So I have to take that program and actually get certified and pass the test in order to be able to go out. So I go out periodically to inspect, to make sure that their erosion control is still up. I take community development with me whenever I I can or whenever they're available, but they get the reports. Anytime there is more than a quarter inch of rain, we get a report within 24 hours. And this is for all of them. And community development has lists, and they keep track of when they get those reports in. I also sometimes get a report, get that same report copied to me, um, but I can go on and and check and look at them. Um, I will glance at certain ones, and I will glance at ones not every week, but you know, whenever. I will tell you to get my individual attention. If something's gone wrong out there, you get it instantly.
Yeah.
And I don't leave you. And they aren't too happy.
Oh, well.
But um, that's, you have to do it. I mean, I had an incident this up, this spring, and you know, we're still working through it. But we're working through it. EPA would might say, you know, season to season, but that's not gonna solve the problem.
Right.
You need to solve the problem by working through and getting the things corrected that needed to be done. So we're doing that.
Great, thank you, Dawn.
Hmm.
All right, Andy.
Just one question. You you mentioned a $75,000 loan to do a study out at Babusik Lake.
Hmm.
Is that cost shared with Sam Hurst?
No, this is only our section.
Just for our section of the?
Our section.
Okay.
And it's only for.
Pine Hill Shores.
Pine Hill Shores. It's only a section. It's a very, it's a small section.
The east side right there?
Yeah, where all those camps are.
Okay, thank you.
So they're looking at all the drainage and the roads. They're looking at all of that.
Nancy?
Thank you. Um, you mentioned something about um getting some of the private septics on your radar. Uh, what's the mechanism by which if, you know, if uh that you get notified about systems that may be, you know, like you said, get pumped two or three times a year? Are those, do the local providers notify you or do homeowners?
No, no. Um, so every time when an individual pumps their, gets their tanks pumped.
Yeah.
It goes in, a septic caller's come. So when he drops it off at wastewater, which is what they do, they have to give a report. So they give a report for anybody, wherever they got the septage from. Because if there's a problem with the septage, you know, there's some type of contaminant, wastewater needs to know that, so they need to know. So at the end of the year, after June 30th, I will be getting, all these reports are coming in. The numbers, um, I don't have all the final numbers at this point because we're still working through the year. But at the end, you know, in the first week in July, I'll probably get an Excel sheet telling me how many gallons were pumped from and what properties were done. And then I can pick out and see, okay, you know, this commercial over here, they're pumping six times. What's wrong with their grease trap? What's wrong, you know?
Yeah.
Things of that nature. I'm not out looking necessarily. There are times, and I have run into one that was up on the lake, that um the leach field was up above, and you could see the stream of water coming down and heading right towards the lake. We had that sampled, and we had that corrected. We got DES involved immediately.
Great, oh, thank you for helping understand. Thank you.
Hmm.
Thanks, Nancy. Yeah, Lon.
Yeah, Dawn, at the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned the interns had helped you out a lot over the last, I think, two summers now?
We've had them for what?
Three.
Eighteen years? Yeah. But the last two years I've had, I had the same group basically for three years. They all graduated on me.
And my question gets to be long-term planning for you and the town and whomever. Um. Facetiously, it's like, when are we going to see the Department of MMS four Maintenance or whatever develop? Because it, if you look at the implications of this progress report, and thank you very much for it, there's a lot of financial burden here. And.
There will be.
Uh, we're mentioning trying to um adjust the timing of the CIP and all of that. Are there implications for the CIP in what you're telling us tonight for?
Not that I'm aware of, not, not right now. We're not at, I haven't done the evaluation yet. So, and we could have another, I haven't looked at year five, to be honest with you, but I know this is coming. So we are gathering our information in preparation for the next step.
Okay.
Um, but I do appreciate, I mean, we have the environmental coordinator because as you can see, this is a full-time job.
Absolutely.
And I haven't been, I haven't really touched it for a year and a half. I mean, I've looked at it at the 10,000 foot level and kind of kept in in line, but I haven't done the day-to-day. That's why I can't give you spilled all the numbers out off the top.
And I'm not looking for those specific numbers. I'm just suggesting that.
But.
Perhaps more for the council than yourself.
We also, you also.
The town needs to be aware of what.
Yep, yes.
The costs are coming.
You authorize the, you know, the new highway foreman, and he's been a great help also, taking over the the catch basins and cleaning and and whatnot. And he's also, I had him out um Tuesday with the interns, helping them to do the outfalls. Because they're, they're new, they're green, and they don't know where all of these are. And some of them are kind of hidden. So they do the best they can to find them, even with their GPS um tablet. But it, you know, they still need a little help.
Oh, Nancy. You wanna say something?
First, Paul. I was just gonna comment on Lon's question. Um, we are following a plan that was put in place for the MS four. Um, as Dawn said, we have an environmental coordinator. We went out and got a stormwater coordinator to work with the MS four and some of, because of some of the things we knew was coming down the road. Um, there are some other things that we know that are coming down the road, and we, we, maybe we, from the new counselors. We had a presentation of this is first three years is what we're gonna do. This is what we need. The next three years is what we're gonna do. This is what we're gonna need. And then the next three years, this is what we're gonna do, and this we're gonna need. And we've been following that plan a lot with it. Um, it might be beneficial to come back to the town council um at during the summer and let you know, once Dawn settles down a little bit, of where we are with with the that plan of of spending and what we're gonna need in the future and what we foresee with steps year six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and so on, because it's a 10-year permit, correct?
No, it's five-year permit.
But we go out 10 because we.
Probably, but yes, I I had created that, and I did look at that recently, and I was like, I haven't updated this for a while.
So we should update it and get it in front of the council in July. Or August, later on, when Dawn catches a breath a little bit from all this reporting that needs to be done because the EPA does have fest and deadlines and hard deadlines that if you don't get it in, you really get slapped pretty good.
Thanks, Paul. Thank you, Nancy. Nancy?
Well, I was just going to do a similar kind of thing. Um, we've known from the first presentation that this was going to be a multi-year gradually increasing personnel need. And we were prepared for that, but every time we have to make a decision about more personnel, it is what it is. It's being imposed on us. And unfortunately, you had, you know, we were in, you were happy, and we were happy of the coordinator, and hopefully that can be rectified too. But it is what it is. Um, but in the meantime, we could thank the interns for what they can do. It's nice to know, however, in the beginning, DES was not being as helpful to you. And it sounds like they're starting to pick up the ball and being of assistance anyway, especially with the EPA.
That took.
Because that was not, the beginning, that was not it.
So that took, um, if you remember back, we had a um bill trying to get passed to have the state of New Hampshire take up the E., instead of the EPA.
Right.
Okay?
But they fought.
I, yes, and I attended those hearings, and we, Kyle and I presented, you know, letters um to the legislatures. It ended up not going anywhere, but one thing that did happen was that I had a meeting with the governor, with DES, and he basically said, you will and you shall help them. This is their way of helping us. So they haven't taken over the permit.
But they have helped.
But they, oh, they're definitely there in front and center. Yes.
Good, I'm glad to hear that.
Yes.
But yes, I think, you know, it's probably near the time. If I'm understanding it correctly, up until now, it's been evaluating, getting the data, seeing maintenance, but the real action is gonna be coming up soon.
That's correct.
Action items. Would that be?
Yes.
Okay, which is gonna need more people.
And money.
So you're right, and money for the people.
Money is gonna be the big.
So you're right on the money.
Yeah.
All right.
I put it on my list.
Very good. Are we, anything further in council? Thank you, Dawn. Thanks very much.
Thank you. I apologize for being so long.
No, not at all. There's a lot of stuff.
I do need to get through certain criteria to be able to put in my annual report.
So the EPA is happy. Yep.
Try.
All righty.
Yeah, we've been through one audit. Don't want to do that again.
Don't need any headaches. All right, uh, first item under new business committee appointments. The school board has given us two names for the council to consider the appointment of Naomi Halter for the Parks and Rec Committee, School Board Representative, and Lori Rothaus is a Parks and Rec Committee alternate, alternate School Board Member Representative. It's a pleasure.
Summer.
Motion by Barbara.
Second.
Second by Tom. If you'd like to further discussion motion, no further discussion. I'll call the question. All of this is in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. Seven zero zero. I think next on the agenda, the longest day. The council is to consider issuing a proclamation designating June 30th, 2022, as the longest day to promote efforts of raising funds and awareness for the care and support of those facing the Alzheimer's disease.
Do we have a proclamation?
It's coming.
Good evening, Bob.
Good evening.
Do you wanna read it?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I hope you're hungry.
So it doesn't get, you have it in front of you?
Thank you.
Six, 2,600 hot dogs. And next week, I pick up 1,600 bags of chips from us. And the following week, I get two and a half pallets of coke. But I'll do my sound, so.
The light was on. Okay, good evening. You don't need to hear me again. I'm here tonight just to say thank you to all of you who have assisted. The longest day, as many of you may know, is because we support and we fight, and we raise awareness and advocacy about the longest disease, which is Alzheimer's. What's unique is that each community has taken on the longest day challenge in a different way, but not Merrimack. Um, my numbers last year were greater than the rest of the state. We had 1,100 people show up. We raised $12,000. We had over 60 volunteers, and people ate 2,300 hot dogs, including the firemen who had a hot dog eating contest. The numbers are beyond anything I can imagine. But I'm gonna read one sentence to you, which makes me feel rather good. I've been in contact with a couple of our state reps about Senate Bill 414, which will change the definition of Alzheimer's and related diseases, which will allow people to be more eligible for respite assistance. The bill has passed the House and the Senate, and I have recently learned, and I'll read you this sentence because it's kind of hard for me to explain it. The Director of Public Policy for the Alzheimer's Association has been working with Governor Sununu's team on a public signing of the new bill, Senate Bill 414, that will expand the access to respite grants. And the governor's team has suggested doing this at your Merrimack Longest Day event. He will come and sign the ceremonial bill here. It will take effect the next day. I won't tell you, when I read that, I read it five times and I said, oh, okay. And I don't know if we've ever had a bill signed in Merrimack that actually will take effect the following day. But it's rather unique. When I sent it to Paul, I was like, oh, but this is good. The governor has come five out of the six times we've had it, even during COVID. He's been very supportive. His committees are very useful. We have state reps who are constantly paying attention to things and sending my data. According to the other coordinators in New Hampshire, they don't get anywhere near the communication with their town, with their state reps, and certainly with the community. So when I found out that our 1,100 attendees was more than all of the other 26 longest day teams, I was like, oh, I guess we're doing something right in the town of Merrimack. So I thank you for all your support. I've given Paul a stack of brochures for you to pass out. I ask you to do two things for me. Volunteer if you have time. I see two cashiers among you, so I know that already. But I also want you to spread the word. Even though 2,600 hot dogs sounds like a lot, that's only 1,300 people. If we can do 1,100 last year, 1,300 this year, maybe we can do 1,400. It's gonna be exciting and I appreciate the proclamation you're about to sign, or you have already signed. I don't know where it is, but.
It's right here.
I'll answer any questions. I don't have anything else to say other than the last Thursday in June. And that's only because school didn't really get out on the 23rd like we thought it would.
Thank you, Bob. I'd like to read the proclamation that we'll be voting on this evening. And it's the Town of Merrimack Town Council Proclamation, National Alzheimer's Longest Day, the longest day in Merrimack, New Hampshire, June 30th, 2022. Whereas Alzheimer's disease, a progressive degenerative brain disease, and the most common form of dementia that tragically robs individuals of their memories and leads to progressive mental and physical impairments. And whereas there is no known treatment to prevent, cure, or even delay the onset or slow the progression of Alzheimer's disease. And whereas one in three seniors dies with Alzheimer's or other dementia, it kills more than breast cancer and prostate cancer combined. And whereas worldwide, 55 million people are living with dementia. And whereas the annual global cost of dementia is 1.3 trillion dollars in US dollars. And whereas the number of people living with dementia worldwide is set to skyrocket to 78 million by 2030. And whereas more than 6 million Americans are living with Alzheimer's. And whereas 12.7 million people aged 65 and older are projected to have Alzheimer's dementia by 2050. And whereas with early detection and diagnosis, individuals and their families can gain access to medications and management strategies that may temporarily improve symptoms. And whereas there is a need to raise awareness about Alzheimer's disease and to honor all of the caregivers who support and care for loved ones with the disease. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the town council of the town of Merrimack hereby pro proclaim June 30th, 2022 as the longest day in Merrimack and stand in support of the 7th Annual New Hampshire Hot Dog Stand Fundraising Event, taking place on June 30th in the Our Lady of Mercy Church parking lot, dated this 9th day of June 2022. Thank you, Bob.
Move approval.
Motion by Tom Koenig, seconded by Barbara. Anybody like to discuss a motion?
I just want to make a quick comment. I, I was able to help out last year. I've been involved with Alzheimer's for a while. My mother passed away from Alzheimer's, so I'm very familiar with the pain and suffering, both of the people that have the disease and the families that deal with that. And so I'm very glad that you do this work, Bob, and that the town of Merrimack supports the work as well as they do. And I really look forward to finding a solution to avoid Alzheimer's. Thank you.
Thank you. One final point that I forgot. I need another committee. That's on Wednesdays, the day before, the 29th, so please put out the word. I only discovered this yesterday when I was moving all the hot dogs. I will need an unloading committee Wednesday afternoon at 2 o'clock. Show up anytime, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock. We have to unload all the coke, move all the hot dogs, move all the bottled water, move all the chips. And then we have to move the 120 chairs and the 40 tables. So I need a lot of people on Wednesday afternoon, which is just coming to my mindset that, oh, all this has got to get moved on Wednesday. Cause we can't do it on Thursday morning. That's not enough time. We'll be violating the code by getting up too early. But if anybody has some time and they want to give me an hour or two, we will have a lot of work to do on Wednesday. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Bob. Nancy.
I just wanted to thank Bob and Ron Sloan publicly for all they have done over the many years. I too, my dad, had Alzheimer's and I, I know not only that does the individual suffer, but the family suffers as well. I've been happy to help out for the last five years and, and I, I know there's a great deal of community support for this event. People ask about it. I know that Bob and crew have made sure that the information gets out on social media and our town offices often show up. So I'm hoping for really great weather and lots of people to show up and we can beat those numbers by hundreds. So thanks again, Bob.
Thank you.
Absolutely. It's always impressive. Alright, with no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the proclamation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Seven zero zero. Thanks for the wonderful work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Does he? We're gonna prepare a town hall. That's what we're.
What? You put this up in town hall? Oh, I would love you to put it up in the event. Tell me the first. Thank you, town manager.
You want a copy, Bob? Do you need a copy?
Not if you're gonna post it. The proclamation previously, I do believe I figured out a couple of years ago. Why you didn't need a confirmation? I don't need it. You need it.
Yes, absolutely.
I can't envision you chewing anybody out. He didn't hear me.
Probably good.
I don't have my hearing consent on purpose.
Oh, okay. Item number three, under new, under new business. Council will consider the request to unmerge Lot 10 from Lot 6 and Lot 8 from Tax Map 5D-4/43 on Hadley Road in accordance with RSA 674:39AA, which is restoration of involuntarily merged lots. And here this evening is Attorney Greg Michael to make this presentation. As am Paul, yes.
I just want to let the council know that Attorney Michael did work with our town attorneys on this. And the town attorneys have vetted it and Attorney Michael is bringing it forward based on the recommendations of our town attorney as well.
Good evening.
Thank you, Paul. Attorney Greg Michael, I'm here on behalf of the applicant Brad Nate Development and Management. The request is fairly straightforward. I won't take up much of your time. Tax Map Parsa 5D-43 is actually comprised of three lots that started back in 1899 on an old plan, well before planning and zoning. Lot 6 and 8 have structures on them. Lot 10 is vacant and my client would like to unmerge the lots. The state passed a statute about seven or eight years ago allowing merged lots, merged lots that were merged involuntarily. And in Merrimack, that basically suggests 3.05 of the zoning ordinance that I looked at. And I looked at, I went back a number of years, pre-2010, and in 2005, we had the merger provision placed on our ordinance, which basically says that if you own a budding land that's not conforming, they automatically merge. The legislation 67439AA allows folks to unmerge those lots. It's a statutory allowance. And that's why I'm here on behalf of my client. We'd like to take Lot 10 and pull it away from the other two parcels. It's allowed. It's been looked at by town council and Paul's correct. I did coordinate this with Carrie Anne Roman. She and I had a number of discussions, went over this, and I believe that they concur in my request. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Attorney Michael. So you're removing 10 from 6 and 8. Are 6 and 8 gonna remain merged or are they?
I believe that those lots are merged because of the voluntary actions of the owner. One has a garage barn and the other's the house. And under Roberts v. Wyndham, a case that I argued before the State Supreme Court, they would consider that. In other words, if you have two lots, you own them both.
Yep.
And you want to put your house right on the, right on the lot line. And I know you're familiar with this.
Yep.
You've, you've merged those lots.
Yeah.
I want to make that very clear. You have merged those parcels.
If you're on the lot line or if.
Yeah, you, you've done it yourself. It's considered an, that's considered a voluntary merger of lots. Here, this was an involuntary merger by virtue of our ordinance, which was the merger provision. I know you're familiar with that. Those lots were pulled together because they're now non-conforming parcels. And the statute allows people to unmerge the parcels.
Okay, but it's, so it's just 10 that's being unmerged?
Just 10.
And 10 isn't?
Just 10.
Is a non-conforming lot at this?
Yes, it is. Just 10.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Yes. I believe there's a fence that circles around that lot. Who wants the fence?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Cause I think there's also shed on it as well.
The town, there's nothing on the lot. There's nothing on the parcel. The GIS map showed that the town ran a road.
Right.
Through the part of the lot.
Right.
And we're not, that's not under discussion tonight.
Okay, I just wondered if.
We're looking at the lot itself.
Someone thought that they were.
It's just, it's just that lot being unmerged from the other two lots. That's, that's what we're, that's what we're looking at.
Yeah, and it wasn't real clear in the map where the road actually impacted Lot 10.
I might have a small plan that would help you. I thought there was something that was.
We have a pretty small one here, which.
Yeah, I have, it's, this looks like it's from our GIS. And it just, and it just isn't clear. It appears that the boundary is there and the road fits in between at that point. It definitely encroaches in private properties further south.
I, I expect that, you know, we're not, we're not, again, we're not here to discuss that tonight. But the town ran a road through, I will tell you that I could not find any road layout plan. I could not find any easement plan.
Sure.
You know, again, things can exist that aren't recorded. We all know that. But in this instance, the town a number of years ago ran a road through the northerly portion of the parcel.
No, very good.
But again, that's not what we're, we're not here on that tonight.
Any further discussion? It's the pleasure of the council. Oh, Paul, did you?
There is a motion in your packets. If you go through and it's probably like four pages in underneath the topic. It's written by Carrie Anne. Basically, it says if you agree with the recommendations, there's your motion if you want to make it. So she did all the motion work for you.
Just, just for the record, I haven't seen that. I, I don't know what, I know that the town generally conferred. I haven't seen the motion.
Okay, so I move to grant the request of the Brad Nate Development to unmerge from Lot 43 on Tax Map 5D-4. Lot 10 is shown on the plan of property of International Shoe Company dated September 40, 1941 and recorded at the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds as Plan 690. And that Lot 10 remains subject to the town's right of way for Hadley Road in accordance with RSA 674:39AA.
You're gonna authorize this to them?
And then authorize Paul McCally to sign on behalf of the council the attached notice of decision and to be recorded at the registry of deeds. And notify community development and assessing to update the zoning map and the tax map to show Lot 10 as a separate lot.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Tom Koenig, seconded by Barbara. Any further discussion on your motion?
I think it's pretty clear.
It's pretty clear.
It's the right way to go.
Alright, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Seven zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Enjoy the evening.
Thank you, Attorney Mike.
Next item, number four, under new business, council will consider the donation from the Merrimack Men's Softball program of the, of the cost of an external staircase for the canteen building at Martell Field to provide access to the upper floor of the building. Merrimack Men's Softball will be working with KLN Construction, who will be donating labor and materials for the project with an estimated value of $1,200 pursuant to RSA 31:95D in Charter Article 8, Section 15.
Mr. Chair, we do have a couple representatives from Men's Softball. They're in the audience.
It was filtering down. I was assuming that. The last man, last man standing.
They, they can explain what they're gonna do, but I can explain it in generalities. At the Martell Field, they, there is a concession stand on the first floor and then there was announcer's booth on the top floor. There was a little scuttle hole that you had to be less than 100 pounds to get through, to get up and be able to run the scoreboard and be the announcer for, for games of that sort. But the Men's Softball came to me and said, we want to use the scoreboard. How do we do this? And we said, well, you have to get, you gotta actually get a proper form of egress out of the back of the, the area because what was happening during some of the games and things of that sort, stuff was being stored in the lower level to get in and out. And they were blocking access if there was a fire. You couldn't get down the scuttle hole. You would actually have to jump out of the announcer's booth, like from a second story floor out. And there's a fence right there, which is the back of the softball field. So they came to me and said, how do we do this? We worked together. They worked with our planning and building department to propose the sketch of the stairwell to be able to use. They have worked, like I said, with the planning board. They can explain it more detail what's going on. This has been in the works, Todd, for three, three years now, roughly? Yeah, before COVID, they, they started wondering if they, to use this and it would just be another avenue and help so they can run the scoreboard. They really don't do much announcing, so it isn't gonna be, you know, now batting, da, 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 da. It's mostly somebody up there running the scoreboard, so the guys playing don't have to keep saying, hey, what's the score? Hey, what's the score? They can turn around and see the inning and score kind of deal, so.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. On behalf of Jim Banthe and Todd Anderson, we're both on the executive board for the Merrimack Men's Slopeage League. And it's great to see a couple retired faces here from that league in this row over here. I've been in the league since 2004 and have been the president of the league for many years as well. And, you know, Paul's on target for, for quite a bit of that. It's even more using it for storage. Because in the past, we were storing things in that first part of the shed that we used to put it up top, but then it became, we couldn't use the little pull downstairs anymore because it was a fire hazard over the box. So we virtually had no place to store our equipment, rakes, screens, all the stuff we had. We have tried sort of temporary sheds that seem to get destroyed fairly quickly. So it always worked quite well back in the past, being able to use that upstairs area for storing a lot of our equipment, which we haven't been able to do for, for a while now. So we're looking forward to getting back up there to, to store things as well as to, to use the scoreboard. No announcing, there's no intentions of doing any announcing, you know, whatsoever. And Jim is, Jim is on the board as well and owns the construction company. He's donating his.
I'm donating my time, material. The league's gonna pay for half. I'm gonna pay for half. I'll donate the time, just to help it out. Cause we just need a place to store stuff. You know, it's tougher. Have, we have a couple guys on the board. If they can't make it, they bring the stuff because they take it home. We're trying to keep it in a locked, safe space. Too many people have the code to the bottom one, you know? Now we're gonna have our own area where we keep everything, you know? Try to keep, make it safe for, for our league itself.
There is a secondary concession area, but that is rented out that we don't have access to using. So we literally have nowhere to put.
It's like a four by 10 area and it's right where the electrical board is.
We can't even put anything in there.
Anything in there.
Mr. Jones has informed us you can't put even a rake inside that first little space. Yep, so.
Which we understand fully, you know, that the electrical panel is very important. We've also, Todd and I went there one night. We had one upstairs to make sure the floor's safe. Everything is safe up there. I blocked it back up, put screws in so nobody can get up. Everything is safe, sound in that place, so if.
And Mr. Jones has seen everything approved, like that's all been.
He's seen everything and I spoke with him a few times. I didn't know I was gonna have to go in front of you guys to approve this, but we got the email saying, you know, here we are. So he's already seen everything. He's got my drawing, got where I'm putting the stairs, everything. So alls we need is the approval to do it.
Perfect. Very good. It's very kind of you, I think, for the program to be doing what you're doing. It's kind of old school, but.
It's a great league and we all have fun doing it. Want to keep it great, you know?
Spectacular. Tom?
So I, I think it's a great idea, but I have a couple of questions. The scoreboard that's up there and the access to it is only from that room? Is that room gonna be locked because you're storing things in it so that other people can't use it? Or what, what's the thought or plan of?
The, the scoreboard?
Yeah.
That, that field is only used for, for our league.
Okay, it's a public field though, right? I mean.
It is, but yeah, I mean, I guess at this point it's.
You guys are the majority users. I'm not arguing. I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, if, if that's the case, if somebody does want to use it, like this high school or something of that sort, it'll be keyed for the town and the town will be giving out the key to them. And we could give out the key to, to whoever might want to use it. What, what, yes, the, the scoreboard sits in center field. It's the controller that sits upstairs and then.
Correct. It's been a long time since.
Yeah, I mean, it, it actually got moved downstairs.
Oh, did it?
For, once, once it wasn't allowed to, you know, the, the pull down was not allowed to be used anymore, it got, you know, diverted. So I think it's back more to the storage part of it even than.
The scoreboard?
You know, I don't even know if the scoreboard still even works, quite honestly, so it, it's really back to more of the, you know, a place to store our stuff.
Okay. Okay.
But a good, a great question. I think right now it's just our league, and then I think the Manchester Social Club uses it.
On Sundays?
On Sundays, I believe. And then there are some tournaments that are run on weekends by a completely different association.
Okay. Lon?
Yeah, thank you. I had occasion to look over that whole complex for a task with the Parks and Recreation Committee. So I'm somewhat familiar with the building. Are you going to be removing the pull-down staircase?
We were not gonna. What I was going to do is I was going to block off the area. It just makes sure nobody can do it. Like, it's all bolted from underneath. You need a good pair of, you know, screwdrivers to get it out, like a good drill driver.
When I was looking over the area, there, these, the doors for a small storage area on the bottom of that building had been basically taken, removed somehow. They weren't on, they weren't on study.
Oh, yeah. On that white one in the back? Is that what you're talking about, the white storage in the back?
So in, in doing the work with the stairwell, you're probably be buttoning that hole up?
Oh, yeah. Uh, which, which one? There's a hole, there's a door missing?
It's at the bottom of the building. There were rakes and whatever you mentioned.
Oh, that little.
Oh, that little white, yes.
Yeah, that's gone.
We're taking that out.
Yeah, that's what we've been trying to use.
That's where we're going to put the stairs.
That's where the stairs are going.
So we're just talking about the main building?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Perfect. All righty.
Yeah, unless, I mean, you wanted to put a shed up for us to put stuff in, but I don't think, that's probably in the plans, right? I mean, there is a, there is a, over Todeowski, there is a, a, a structure that we put our stuff in for that field, but there's virtually nothing for us at that Martell Field at this point.
All right. It's the pleasure of the council.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept a donation from Merrimack Men's Softball for an external staircase to the canteen building at Martell Field to provide access to the upper floor of the building. The donation will be for labor, labor and materials for the project, estimated value of twelve hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion by Andy, seconded by Barbara. Would you like to further discussion motion? Nope. No more further comments, thoughts? We got, we got a second. Thank you, Lon. I'll call the question, then. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Seven zero zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
So I guess what's next steps? Do they get back to you with?
Oh, the town, the building, building inspector will get back to me when I can get the permit because he's already got everything. We had to go through this. Once you send it to him, I'll get the permit.
Okay.
Perfect. All right.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, under new business, item number five, council to consider a donation of six hundred dollars from the Merrimack Lions Club to the Parks and Recreation Department to sponsor the summer movie nights in the park pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five B and Charter Article eight, section fifteen. And these funds are going to be used for paying the licensing fees to publicly show the movies. That is correct.
To accept the donation of six hundred dollars from the Merrimack Lions Club for the movie nights, summer movie nights in the park.
Second.
Motion by Tom Koenig, seconded by Barbara with thanks, I'm sure. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstained. Seven zero zero. Thank the Lions Club. Thank you, sir. All right, next on the agenda, under new business, disposal of tax-deeded properties. The council to consider disposal of tax-deeded properties pursuant to RSA eighty colon eighty-eight, eighty colon eighty-nine, and eighty colon ninety.
Paul? I am before the town council to ask the town council what they would like to do with the, the two properties that we have acquired through tax deed.
So it's, and the true choices of the council are, one is to retain the property, which you can do for up to three years, or to sell the properties.
Dispose of it.
Dispose of the properties. So if there's any thoughts, or Tom?
Mr. Chairman, I move to dispose of the tax-deeded property at tax map seven D, lot one sixty-six dash A zero six immediately and prior to the end of the three years by way of public auction per town code, chapter sixty-six, article one, with proper notice given to the prior owners and all mortgage and lien holders, and further to proceed with the eject, ejectment action against anyone presently occupying the property.
Is that for one property specifically?
That's for the one property at seven D, one sixty-six dash A zero six.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? Oh, we need, we do need a second, yes.
I was just going to second it.
Okay, thank you, Lon. A motion by Tom Koenig, seconded by Lon Woods. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call that question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Seven zero zero.
Mr. Chairman?
Tom?
I'd further like to move to dispose of the tax-deeded property at tax map seven E, lot zero one seven dash zero four eight immediately and prior to the end of the three years by way of public auction per town code, chapter sixty-six, article one, with proper notice given to the prior owners and all mortgage and lien holders, and further to proceed with the ejectment action against anyone presently occupying the property.
Motion by Tom Koenig. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Barbara. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained. Seven zero zero. Thank you, Tom. Next on the agenda is approval of the May twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. It was pretty occupied. So were a few people.
Many of us weren't there.
It, it was an interesting view of the council that evening. There was plenty of social distancing going on.
Yeah, it did look like that was.
So what's the pleasure of the, of the council?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve the minutes of May twenty-six, twenty thousand, or two thousand and twenty-two as presented.
Second.
Motion by Andy, seconded by Nancy Murphy. Any discussion, any change, Tom?
You want to go ahead?
Well, I just have one on page two of twelve, line fourteen. It reads the following, but I, I think I'd like to revise it. "The council then discussed with Mr. Best the growing community and the need for more affordable housing options for both the younger and older generations." That makes it sound like we spent a lot of time talking about it. We didn't. So I would like to, I would prefer, if it's with the council's permission, to revise it to the following. "The council then discussed with Mr. Best the apartment growth patterns in the town and concerns expressed by residents," because we spent more time on that.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Okay.
Yep.
So, and I, and the, I'm sorry. "The council then discussed with Mr. Best the apartment growth patterns in town and concerns expressed by residents about them." The other thing is on line thirteen, it says, "For terms he shared that Jamie Nelson," I think we should put the names in, Nelson Burns, not Nelson Burns.
Disco.
Nelson Disco, thank you. And Jamie, who's Jamie?
Danny Von Schuh.
Ah, okay.
Yep.
So those full names should be put in, not just first.
That's a very good point.
Good catch, huh?
Yeah, because well, today, that's not a problem.
I know Mr. Koenig has more than I do, but those are the ones I caught.
So, um, it's my turn now. Under, on page four, down around line forty-three, the motion just sounds a little funny, and I wanted to clarify that. It says the tax map, tax parcel six E, one fifteen, one, as is, whereas to Gary Bailey. It probably meant to be where is.
That was provided.
As is where is.
Was that provided by the attorney, Paul?
That's the way you worded that.
Paul?
I'm trying to remember.
I think it was provided by the attorney.
Yeah.
Well, it's not where as, it's where is. It's where the property is that you, you would do it. And it wouldn't be a quick claim. It would be a quit claim.
Quit, you're absolutely right.
Q U I T.
And the, and the parcel nomenclature, or whatever you would call it, is not the way it would ought to be delineated.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can verify too, because I think that was a written motion for us.
It was written, provided to us.
But you're, but the.
But whatever, if, if it was written slightly differently, then it ought to be corrected.
Correct.
She was probably just trying to understand my accent. Probably. I used the English language.
And then it, further on in chap, on page five, it talks in italics at line thirty-four about combining sections two and four, and then two and three and four get written up in the minutes. I, I don't know if two and four actually got combined because it doesn't appear that they did. They, they're listed here totally separately as if they're separate discussions.
They were separate discussions.
They were just moved.
Yeah, I think Nancy moved them together.
The sequencing was changed because, like, Babusik was the item number two, and then another Babusik was like item number four. And what I did is I moved four up, so it became number three, so that the Busik.
Well, shouldn't the minutes kind of reflect that change?
More clearly.
As opposed to having number three still be there accelerating the Seegan River Trail and number four being? I mean, if you moved it, you moved it, is all I'm trying to suggest.
I agree.
Yes. Or take out that note, because if they're going to all be separate, then they're going to be separate.
We, we moved it. Two, what was it? Two and four got moved because they.
To become two and three is what the note says.
Correct.
You either take the note out or, or move four to be number three.
Yeah, we, they moved straight up. Four got moved up.
I know, but they're not in the minutes that way.
No, that way, it's got to be. That's what I'm saying. They got to be moved.
Okay, thank you.
They got to be moved.
That's correct.
On page seven, line sixteen, says DW High, DW Highway bearing, two lanes of traffic. Bearing means to remove your clothing. I think B E A R I N G.
You weren't there talking at.
Is what was meant, that the road would hold two lanes of traffic. So B E A R I N G instead of B A R I N G.
It was an interesting discussion.
I can imagine it got real interesting. That was all I had to offer, just reading through the minutes. I wasn't there. I apologize. I was on an airplane between Dallas and Charlotte, North Carolina, dodging rainstorms.
All righty. Any further thoughts on the minutes from the?
That's what I have.
May twenty-six. All right. I don't recall who made the motion and seconded, I'm sorry. Andy and?
Andy and Barbara, was it?
Was it Barbara?
Yeah.
It was Nancy. Oh, you got it, okay.
Andy and Barbara.
All right. I have to be and finally figure out for my own notification. I'll call the question. As I mentioned, all those in favor of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained?
Abstained.
I'll be abstaining. And thank you for being at that meeting, Barbara.
And Lon too?
Yeah.
And, yeah, so Lon, the abstentions were Lon, Tom Koenig, and me.
Yes, I do appreciate Barbara. Thank you very much.
I got the phone call from Barbara.
Saving that call.
And then I find out, oh, she called in, okay, and then I'm realizing, we aren't enough people there, so. All righty. Next on the agenda, comments from the press. There's no press, comments from the public. There's no public at this point. Comments from the council. Nancy?
I just wanted to say again, congratulations to Eagle Scout Timothy Yon, troop four-two-four. On Sunday, June fifth, I was happy to make that town council's presentation to him, recognizing his achievement at the Court of Honor ceremony at, held at Camp Carpenter. It was very well attended. It was really quite a beautiful event. I think also, I just wanted to thank all of the people, the adults who work with Merrimack youth to engage and support them in, in like positive experiences and successes like this. This is how we build a great community, and, and it was wonderful to see so many kids there and adults. And, and I think we've seen a lot of Eagle Scouts in the last year, and, and Tim is, is the most recent. So just wanted to, to, to recognize him again, so.
Thank you, Nancy. Any further comments? Seeing none.
We all turned to Lon.
Hearing no other comments, I make a motion we adjourn.
Seconded by Lon, seconded numerous seconds. Tom Koenig, I'll give it to. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Seven zero zero. Thank you so much.